I'm headed to another town hall meeting here in Florida, where we already know tensions are extremely high, and the local law enforcement is supposed to be on standby. Literally, anything could happen. Headed to Bronson. Now Bronson is the town that has all the clean water, and Cedar Key is the other town on the other side of Otter Creek that wants that water. And you've got Otter Creek, this little incorporated town that is gonna pass through. So this means a lot to us. Clean water is like number one for the residents of Otter Creek. After you clean up all that corruption, the illegal activities, all the pathological lying, maybe even that turtle dump. Uh, but water, we gotta have water. Water washes away all those sins. Let's see what Bronson has to say about it. 1968 Bronson Water System. Not only are we trying to share water, we actually share the same town lawyer. Mr. Worm. Yeah, I don't know if he's gonna be here in person. He doesn't show up to Otter Creek. I seriously doubt he's gonna show up to Bronson.
Attorney Worm did show up to Bronson. Not Otter Creek, but Bronson. And he's thrilled to see me. Biggest fan, right there.
Is it just me, or don't you find it odd that Attorney Worm shows up to Bronson, but he doesn't come 10 minutes more down the road to Otter Creek? Now, here's a couple things with Attorney Worm. He don't like me, I don't like him. He's got a reputation of being a very... non-ethical lawyer in Levy County. And he's part of all the horrific, horrible, non-ethical things that have happened in Otter Creek to me and to others. He's part of the problem, not part of the solution.
He's back. That's the best job right there, right? Man, alright. You ain't here for me this time though, are you?
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bronson, let me say this. I commend you. As a matter of fact, I'm absolutely thrilled that you start your meeting in the presence of God, wanting His guidance and will for the town and for the people.
I'm motioning, have you approved of the agenda?
Probably move to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote aye. Alright, next up is approval of minutes for June 26th, 23rd.
With approval of minutes for town council meeting on June 26th.
Again, probably move to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote aye. Public participation. We have a change of venue tonight. Okay? For public speaking, if you wish to speak, you need to register with Ms. Mindy, fill out a speaker's request form, and submit it to her. At that time, we're going to ask each person to approach the podium, state your住址 and address for the record, and your comments will be limited to three minutes. We're gonna follow pace, do the same thing with county issues. That being said, if you have not, she has the on with her, and I will give you all a few minutes to do that if you wish to. If you haven't already, go. So, do you have anything, Ms. Mindy?
No, I'd like to be able to talk publicly.
Okay, nobody wants to talk, first of all.
Okay.
Information loud, we'll move right ahead then. Our second budget workshop will be Monday, July the 24th, at 5:00 PM here. Basically, it's fun, fun, fun. Ain't that right, Ms. Mindy? So, uh, our next council meeting will be the same night, following that at 6:00 PM. Bread for the mighty Food Bank. Home Food Drive is Friday, July the 27th. That's at 1:00 PM at the City Park. And the Duke Energy Florida Transmission Reliability Initiative Project.
I'll speak to that, I have an informational bite. So Duke Energy was in my office last week and said that they're going to be using some drones here in town. So if anybody sees drones above their residences...
You might be thinking, who's talking right now? Well, this is Sue. And Sue is the town manager. Now typically, when a city, or in this case, a town, has enough income, the mayor holds the position and has some responsibilities. But really, that town manager really runs the place. Think of it in your mind like this, okay? So, we know we have the royals across the pond, right? So you have the king and the queen, but then you have the prime minister. So really, the king and the queen, they hold that position. We're gonna equate that to the mayor position. But then, the town manager, Sue, is really like the prime minister. Really gets the day-to-day, everything that needs to get done. It happens through Sue. The information, you name it, that's Sue. She's the prime minister of Bronson. Now, it's not a 100% fair comparison by any stretch of the imagination. I'm just trying to help you visualize it and picture it in your mind. When it comes right down to it, the mayor's doing a fantastic job, and you're gonna see that throughout this video. But you're gonna see that Sue is doing an incredible job. Like, this woman is on top of everything, organized, analytic. You name it, she's got this place under control. And I gotta say, I was amazed, amazed at this meeting in Bronson.
It's Duke Energy. If you have questions, I have a phone number here you can call with any questions. I don't think those are associated, I saw that too, but I think those are somebody else, because this hasn't started yet. He said it was gonna start in the next couple of weeks. So, but again, I do have an ETS as a seven number if anybody has any questions on it. But if you see drones, we're likely they are at Duke Energy. Is it?
Alright. Well, Sue, as you got before, take off.
Alright. First up is first reading of ordinance 23-01. I'm gonna go ahead and read the title for the record. An ordinance to be known as the Town of Bronson Water and Sewer System Capacity Fee Ordinance, Providing Findings, Providing For Imposition Of Water and Sewer Capacity Fees, Providing For Payment Use Of Moneys, Providing For Developer Contribution Credit, Requiring Periodic Review, Declaring Exclusion From Administrative Procedures Act, Providing For Public Hearing, Providing For Conflict And Severability, Providing For Effect Date. Alright, so let me give a little bit of background, mostly for Councilors Phillip and Councilor Schuler. We did a, the town did a water and sewer capacity fee study through the Florida Water Association. It's in your packet. I believe it was completed in January of this year. We did a first reading of this ordinance, I think it was back in April. And one of the things that we kinda got stuck up on is, originally, we took this ordinance from the city of Warped Zone. This is basically theirs, we've mortified it a bit. And originally, I only put in residential for the water and sewer fees. The council came back and said, we really think we should be putting in commercial, um, kinda let it sit for a couple of months, because I know you guys were really new. We had a lot of other things going on. The reason I'm bringing it back now is because the whole of states is starting to get more traction. They're gonna be coming before the council at the next council meeting to talk about next steps, talk about sewer, that sort of thing. Um, so that's why I'm bringing it back up again. So...
We're getting to some important stuff here. Water, we need it for life. And Otter Creek needs it desperately. And Bronson has clean water. And with this water initiative, we're supposed to be getting our water from Bronson. That makes it pretty important for us to know what's going on with Bronson water, and they're talking about it right now. Anything that gets pumped up at Bronson is gonna be headed right through Otter Creek on its way to Cedar Key, and we're gonna, we're gonna sip some from the straw. So I wanna know everything about it. Now, my real reason for being at the Bronson meeting is because we heard last month got a little out of control. And I happen to know from experience, bringing a YouTuber with a camera and things de-escalate really quick. Now, they're already filming all of their meetings, and having me there with commentary may help de-escalate it a little bit. We're gonna have to go through the whole meeting and see. But I got to know about this water.
We wanna talk a little bit about what these fees mean and what we can use them for. So, there's two different things that we can, two different ways we can pass these. We can pass them what's called the remaining useful life. If you look in your packet, I kinda highlighted some of these for you. Let me back up. Capacity fees are proportional to the capacity set aside for new customer development or connection. In some systems, they're called capacity fees, and others they're called impact fees, benefit assessments, user fees, contributions at any of construction or payment charges. When Florida Water came in to make the presentation, it goes back in February, they continuously said to us, it's growth paying for growth. You don't want your current residents to have to pay for new sewer and water going in. You're making your developers and people who are putting in brand new homes pay for that growth. So again, we have two different options that we can pass. We can either go with the remaining useful life for replacement value basis. Remaining useful life is how much that utility has left remaining. So, the length of time utility infrastructure, piping, pumps, tanks, and equipment is likely to be functional before it requires replacement. One of the things they sent in here is that Bronson Wells and Water Treatment Plant were constructed between 1987 and 1993, approximately 30 years ago. And it's already passed what the state would consider its useful life, which is roughly 27 years. So Florida Water is not recommending that we pass the remaining useful life. They're recommending we go with the replacement value, which is the cost of the utility to install new infrastructure, piping, pumps, tanks, and equipment in today's dollars.
Let me try and explain this to you the best I can. Whenever you build something, whenever you own something, it depreciates, it breaks down, it gets old. It needs to be replaced. We call this in tax terms or budgeting depreciation. And the government gives you all kinds of breaks with depreciation with real estate. In other words, you have to fix it, or you have to replace it. Think of it in the terms of budgeting for your car. If you've got a car, and you maybe have a line item budget for your car, you have gasoline for your car, right? But what about repairs? I need new brakes, I need a new air filter, I need to change the oil. It's always, always a line expense. And the same goes true when you have a water treatment plant. Things are gonna get old, they're gonna break down, they're gonna depreciate. And typically in a budget, what you do is you depreciate all those assets. You depreciate them and their value over 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, typical 20 or 30 years. Sometimes 25 as well, depending on who you are. And then at that point, you go, this has lived its useful life. We need to replace it. So the same is true in Otter Creek. We have very antiquated and an old water treatment system. So does Bronson. And at some point, what the state is telling them, you need to replace this whole thing. You're gonna be out of the budget as far as depreciating it. You don't wanna keep working on those things with duct tape, as in the case of Otter Creek, or hangers, or things along those lines. The state would like to see them replace it all brand new. And those who would be paying for it would be paying it in a fee to build a new house. Now, whether you call it an assessment, whether you call it a fee, government likes to use all these words to not say the word "tax", okay? What it really is, is a tax, not legally, but it's a tax. You're gonna build, here's a tax. $12,000 plus thousand for you to get water. And that money's gonna be set aside to build a new water plant. And in my opinion, that's perfect. That's genius. They should be building new water plants. Of course I think that. I live in Otter Creek, and I want water from Bronson.
The difference, obviously it's a very big difference, and this is, again, we had a lot of comment back in April when we were talking about this into the first reading. If we go with the remaining useful life for the water, it's $1,220 per, let's call it a single family home. Replacement value is $2,750. Not a huge, I mean it is roughly doubled, but not as big of a difference as it is on the sewer side. On the sewer side, the remaining useful life is $5,720, whereas the replacement option is $9,780. So you're looking at $6,940 remaining useful life between both utilities, or $12,530 between both utilities for the replacement value. They also talked a little bit about the fact that they would recommend doing a CPI, which I know we've talked about the council before. In 2022, the CPI is 4.53%. And that's something that we've talked about. Once we take the water increase on October 1st of this year at 5%, and the second 25% on the sewer in May 1st of next year, we talked about doing a CPI in like October 1st, right here. Okay, so what can you use these funds for? You can use them for...
Sue, let's talk, give it one second. This is for their benefit, okay?
This is for, correct.
Okay, this is for your benefit. To do this, we had to do the study.
Correct, we had to do that, correct.
If you do not, like City Williston did, they went and implemented their, made up their own rules that they went, and they got, called their hands in the cookie jar, and they had to make that money back.
Millions of dollars.
We don't do it.
Millions of dollars.
Is it just me, or these small towns in Levy County starting to all sound the same? Hands in the cookie jar, stealing from the people, and then getting caught. Now, it's not just Otter Creek with the dirty meek. Uh, even though there's more meeks on the county commissioner side of things, it's everywhere. It just takes one person to uncover it and share it with the people. Don't let yourself be taken advantage of, or robbed, or stolen from by a Mary Mary, or a Russ the Suss, or even a Don the Con. And don't let people like Lynettes and John the Crooks try and take money from you with sob stories that are fake.
The number two thing is that you have to use one or the other. You have to use A or B one of them, correct?
Correct. When we first started talking about this, I think it came up during the strategic planning meetings for the capital improvement plan. I know we were kinda bandying about like, hey, we'll just do $1,000, or $2,000. We were making numbers up. And yeah, that's when we found out that Williston got their hands slapped, because they did the same thing. They just arbitrarily made up the number, and then they weren't able to defend that number. And so now they're, you know, returning all of that money to us residents. So, the reason we have to go with these is because if we were to be sued for whatever reason, Florida Water would defend us, and you know, we'd be okay. But we do have to go with one of these two numbers. Now...
So, the money that we collect could be used for...
Okay, so the money can be used for design or construction plan preparation, construction management and inspection, capital construction costs, reimbursement of excess developer contribution credit, payment of principal and interest, necessary reserves, cost of issuance under any bonds or any other indebtedness issued by the town to provide funds to construct or acquire growth impact and capital purpose. The other thing to keep in mind is we do have to do a new rate study every three years to make sure that these, whatever we pass, is still good at that point. And if you guys do pass this, it goes into effect 90 days from the date of publication. Okay, so that's kind of a background and power here. So, it stalled back in April, because like I said, I only put in the residential. We came back and said, we don't really want just residential for the next three or four years. We should move to commercial. So if you look at the actual ordinance itself, and go to like the bottom of the second page. We put in these ERUs, which means equivalent residential unit. So, a brand new house comes in here. It would be connected to water and sewer. If you guys pass the replacement value, they pay that $12,000 and change. As you look on page 3, and you see the whole list of commercials, so you know, a bar, a barber shop, a beauty salon, rolling alley, a church, convenience store, dentist, et cetera, et cetera. You can see that they don't pay the whole 100%. They may pay like, Rolling Alley pays one dollar. So if Rolling Alley came in here, they wouldn't have paid the full $12,000 and change, they would pay roughly $4,000 and change. So that's the reason that this stalled back in April, is we wanted to go back and put these ERUs in both water and sewer to make sure that something came in, you know, in the next three or four years. We didn't have a chance to reevaluate this, and then it's got the commercial in there. So there's a commercial component for both the water side, and there's a commercial component for the sewer side. They're the same, but they're both in here now. So, we're back to another first reading. Basically, everything we did in the past, we threw out. Now we're starting again at this first reading. If it was to pass, you guys can change this, obviously, but if it was to pass, then it would get noticed, and then we would, you know, roll for the second reading sometime in August.
So Bronson definitely has to do something about their water plant. It's old, it's antiquated, it's out of date. And the state is mandating they have to do something. Now typically in these situations, then the locals, they uprise and, "No, you can't charge us!" Well, it's not like the towns coming in, and the council members are coming in going, "Oh, we really want to do this to you." No, they don't wanna do that to the people. They don't want extra fees for the people. They want everybody to live happily and healthily. And the way to live healthy is with clean water. And the only way to do that is to update or upgrade your water plant. Somewhere, some way, that's gotta be paid for. That money just doesn't appear out of nowhere. But they've gotta figure it out. Is it gonna come from the current residents of Bronson? Which they are gonna have assessment fees, I'm sure, in some way, some form. Or is it gonna come from new people coming into Bronson? And is the new people, are they gonna pay just to keep the place going? Or are they gonna pay to update and build a whole new water system? My personal opinion, as I've already shared, new water system. Clean, efficient, effective. Over the long run, it's gonna be feeding Otter Creek, Cedar Key, if all this goes through. That would be the best route, in my opinion.
Assuming you guys want to move forward, is that okay? But yeah, the biggest thing is we wanna make sure that all of the states, assuming they're coming in with their 52 new houses, that they're paying this in that way.
Okay. Any discussion, any questions?
I think we need something, but I don't like the replacement fee. I think $12,000 is too high. So I think that my trucks will up some people from wanting to build. I like the, uh, what is it, the, uh...
The remaining, for me, is what?
The remaining useful life. I think $12,000 is too high. Especially when you haven't paid that upfront before you can get started.
Well, we have to put in something, and we're not gonna do it anymore. We have to put in something. So if you guys decide that you wanna do the remaining useful life, I can go back and change this, and then again, we go back to the first reading and the next, Council.
My only thing is that it's not the actual cost of what it would be to replace, if it needed. So we would end up, if we only did the 6, 9, and it ended up, you know, for some reason have to replace it, then we are, that would be money that we would have to pay instead of they would have to pay. So again, our people who already live here are gonna be responsible for something that somebody could've paid when they were moving. And we got houses going up everywhere. When you're paying $300,000 and $400,000 for a house, $12,000 really ain't a lot of money. I'm worried about the impact on us versus the impact on somebody who come here.
Can we go back? This, these numbers are a little bit elevated due to the fact of the density we have here. This, this can change. These numbers can change. And I think we will come back in kinda into line here in the next few years, plus on the rest of it. If we compare ours, with Chief Williston, or Williston, or anybody else's, ours, that'll make the density of our...
Plan B is really killing me.
Yes.
I'm scared too.
And she explained that. When she came into the presentation initially, she explained the difference between, you know, the density in Chief Williston versus us. And then she even explained it in High Springs, which they were in the process of passing one as well. That theirs is even higher than ours, because again, they're so spread out. So yeah, as we hopefully can get more and more people on sewer, it's more compacted, hopefully this will end this way.
So when we do the study in three years, it could change, can it?
Got you. Got you. So I guess the question is, I need some direction from the council as to whether or not you want to move forward with this, or you wanna change it to be the remaining useful life, so we know what to do.
I like the remaining useful life.
Can I say something? You know, I was, uh, now like she said, the remaining useful life of our system is already done. And I'm in agreement with Councilor Schuler. If they come in to purchase a house, and then if you do the, uh, what you're saying is, and there's not enough funds, the town is gonna be responsible for it. And once the town is responsible for so much, then we as customers is gonna end up putting that bill. And like you say, if somebody new wanna come in, if they wanna build a house, you know, like I say, right now, you can't find one under $250,000, that just a... So if they're paying that kind of money, the $12,000, like you say, it probably wouldn't be quite that much, but that's not gonna alter them at all, because it's actually coming from, it's not coming from the person themselves. It's coming from who they're gonna take the money from.
If you're including a mortgage, it's not that bad. But the people who are building their own houses, they gotta pay that money upfront.
Well, it's gonna, that's gonna come in very...
Well, I know that $12,000 rushed out in three years is different than $12,000 at the same time rather than for you to start building your house.
We need, we need you to have, you know, vote on which direction we want.
I wish, because we...
Is that what you're asking?
We need direction, correct. Because if I need to change these, then if I change them right now, then we gotta go back to another first reading again at the next meeting?
If you have the numbers, and you want to assert the numbers tonight, change numbers if that's what it turns out to be. You could do that and adopt it in first reading tonight. What, what you probably need is somebody to make a motion one way or the other, and vote on it, and then you'll know what you wanna do.
Council's pleasure.
Useful life is the $6,900 replacement value, $12,000.
$6,940 versus $12,530. So Sue, if they do, if somebody makes a motion for the useful life tonight, are we stuck with that fee for how long? Two years?
Three years.
Well, tell me, tell me to do the study again, or maybe you could start from right there.
Which means if those houses came in within three years, they would pay the 6,900 instead of 12,000. So if those 50 houses came in in the next three years, they would be...
We would multiply it.
But that's $350,000 that we're gonna pay.
Then we, we get $12,000.
But it's strictly up to what you, you know, what you feel comfortable with.
Potentially, maybe just limping this thing along for a little bit would be okay? I don't know. Maybe there's millions coming in grants to feed water from Bronson to Otter Creek to Cedar Key. Maybe that money will help rebuild the entire structure, and so they're trying to save the townspeople some money. But at any moment, any moment, this water plant goes down. You know who's paying for it right now? The, the people of Bronson. Those residents are gonna have to pay for the repair and the rebuild. There's no money in a budget to just go and do another capital campaign project, such as a whole water house. You may, maybe thinking, what's a capital campaign project? Capital campaign is anything that improves. It's brand new. It's, it's a capital campaign project. And so the, the money's got to come from somewhere. And in a town, it comes from assessing, feeing, or taxing the residents.
The population is gonna continue, but I'm assuming that just continues. We got construction going on. We got construction people in here right now. They continue, like, on this scale. Rest of the country is, is maybe slowing down some, but it's not...
I make more than that. We go with the replacement.
I see.
Motion for the second. Any other discussion? That being said, all those in favor, say the final say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Me.
We have a two-two.
A W now.
Here's what's going on. The mayor is not a member who can vote. In a typical situation, unless it's to break a tie. So you have five council members. The mayor is part of that. Now, Sue is the town manager, or the clerk. She's really the town manager. She's running the town. She's doing what Mary Mary should have been doing for Otter Creek. But Mary Mary had none of the skills necessary. Sue has all of the skills necessary. It could probably run Bronson and Otter Creek both at the same time with her hands tied behind her back and blindfolded. So in this situation, since it's two, hey, let's replace the whole thing, and two, no, let's just, it's useful life. Now the mayor actually has to vote and break the tie. He has to say, well, this is the only time he gets to vote. I get to break the tie in this type of situation because there has to be a majority. It's two versus two. Somewhere, there's got to be a third. And he's the one that has to decide. Or is he gonna go another direction?
I'm gonna vote aye. I'm going with just him, the market fair. And we can't change it for the years. And we don't have anything right there.
But I make a motion to go with the remaining useful life.
I see.
Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
A two-two, and I'll vote aye.
So, so what Karen is to change numbers, not the ones that are in there?
Correct.
Okay. Sue?
Yes.
For the record, announce what the numbers are going to be, the change numbers in the ordinance that was adopted at first reading tonight, so it's clear.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so with the remaining useful life, the impact fee for water would be $1,220, and for wastewater would be $5,720, for a total of $6,940.
How much was it for wastewater?
$5720.
The mayor broke the tie. No new water plant for Bronson. They're gonna go with the fee for remainder of the useful life. Now, part of me goes, man, you know, they, they really need to accumulate and set aside money for a brand-new plant. But the other part of me goes, oh my goodness, I, I've not seen this in Otter Creek, where outsiders come in and buy property, and, and they want to steal from them, and they want to charge them something that the rest of the residents aren't paying. Well, here, the council is actually going, you know what? We want to encourage growth. We want to encourage people coming in. Buildings and homes are going at a minimum, three, $250,000, $300,000. People are coming in. We want the growth. And they're trying to not discourage outsiders. This is a complete and totally different mentality than what I'm used to in Otter Creek. So I want to commend them, number one, hey, thank you for welcoming outsiders. At no point in this meeting did I ever feel unwelcome. Well, except with Attorney Worm. But he's a worm. What do you expect? And they're trying to look out for the best interest of not only their current residents, but those residents that are gonna come into the town and invest in the town. So I think that's a phenomenal thing. And again, they can reassess numbers in three years, and by then, there may be grant money to rebuild the entire plant anyway, bringing water to Otter Creek and Cedar Key. I don't know for sure. I'm not all that involved in Bronson. I really was there just to try and help keep the peace with the camera, and to learn what's gonna happen with our water.
Mr. Worm, there's something here in the agenda that says, FLC's Guide to Section 5, 2023, Live Local Act for Part of Years About. I have no idea what that is.
You brought that up to me, which is why I put it in the packet.
Why does any town pay this man? Mr. Worm. I mean Worm. You don't even know what you're doing there! I bet you he leaves early, too, before the meeting's over.
So this was a memorandum from Craig Khan, General Counsel of Florida League of Cities, regarding this 2023 Live Local Act. Do you not remember that?
I honestly don't. What, what was the general subject matter? Just give me a two-word clue.
Let me read the first paragraph.
Oh, even better.
Okay, Dr. July 1st, 2023, so it was out a week ago. The Live Local Act allocates significant funding and incentives to affordable housing, which is something that the Florida League of Cities strongly supports. However, Section 5 of the Act provides the Section 166.041514 statutes to create a new subsection 7, including local governments' ability to apply their use, height, and density restrictions and hearing processes to qualifying developments with affordable housing units.
Okay, that's what I wanted you to be aware of. There's obviously an initiative from the state to encourage and propagate affordable housing. And they're cutting into the ability of the municipalities to regulate it. So if and when it comes up, at least we're aware that it exists. We're not dealing with anything in that realm right now, but there it is.
I think I've got a webinar on it coming up in the next couple of days, so I can work back on it, too.
Awesome. You got anything else?
Nope, that's it. I didn't know I had that.
All right.
Earned his paycheck, huh? Can't believe it. Literally can't believe how anybody pays this man for anything. All he's done for Otter Creek is increased their legal liability. And then he won't even litigate for them. He's the one that's helped place them in those positions. And it's not just Otter Creek. It's other towns as well.
I actually saw there were a few signs that was left over from the school, when the school was, was behind there. So I had gotten in the school, and I told her that I was gonna ride around and, you know, see which signs need to be done, and which ones need to be replaced.
You were saying that that one definitely needs to be replaced.
It's not one day. It immediately repeated, and you know, it was a week.
It ain't never been one?
It was one day. All right, appreciate it.
We'll take care of that. Okay. Everyone now on out, get a bit of gin, but you just bring yours. She's fine. Do we have anybody else? And want Sue? I didn't take a motion, but you do.
Called it. Wormed his way right out of there before it ever even finished. They just made a motion to pay the bills!